We're now going to feature the candidates for the Watcomb County Council District Four, which is the coastal district, which covers the north central Watcomb County, east of Ferndale and Blaine, including a part of north Bellingham and the cities of Linden, Everson, Nuxack, and Sumas. There are three candidates on your ballot for this race, and I'd like to introduce candidates Brian Estes and Kathy Kirschner. And Brad Kelly was unable to attend this morning. The Watcomb County Council is a legislative branch of Watcomb County government. The county council is comprised of seven members. One member is elected from each of the five county council districts, and two members are elected at large. The county council exercises its legislative power by adoption and enactment of ordinances and resolutions. Watcomb County Council members serve a four-year term, and their annual salary is $35,802. So candidates, you're going to have two minutes for each of your opening statements, and then you're going to have one minute only to respond to each question, and then you'll have a one-minute closing statement. Each of you have a challenge card. Can you show me your challenge cards so you all know where? We haven't been seeing any use of our challenge cards. It's kind of a fun -- it makes our timers happy, but it's kind of exciting. And so when you have a challenge, if you use your challenge, you will have 45 seconds to state your challenge, and then your opponent will have 45 seconds to respond to that challenge. And each of you only get to use the challenge one time. Carol Como, Judy Hopkinson, and Michelle Kapcha are down here in the front. There are timers, and they'll be tracking the time. So timers are going to flash a yellow sign at 15 seconds, a red sign to signal its time is up, and then if the candidates keep speaking, a bell will ring, which means stop talking. We ask the candidates to be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. An important goal of the league is civil discussion, and to that end, we ask that those in the audience be respectful and refrain from comments, hold your applause until the conclusion of the debate. Some of the questions are prepared by our league members. But we encourage, really, we encourage members of the audience to also provide written questions, which will be addressed to both candidates, not to a single candidate. And we have ushers who are available throughout the room. They've got little cards, so if you make a question, just hold your card up, and the ushers will come. Here they are. The ushers will come and get those for you. And then the questions are being screened by our members Jean Carmine and Helen Campbell, and they're screened for legibility and clarity to avoid duplication. So each of the candidates will be asked to respond to the same question during the debate portion. So for this debate, the candidates rolled their dice, and they tied, which is great because it keeps the league on our toes. So they have rerolled, and candidate Estes had the high -- with the high roller. So he is going to give the first opening statement, and then he'll be the last on the closing statement. So after we start, then I'll go back and forth with you, taking turns of who goes first. So timers, are you ready? Okay. So let's start with our opening statement. Candidate Estes, you have two minutes.
I'm Brian Estes, and I'm running for Watcomb County Council District Four. I'd like to thank the league for hosting this forum today. I spent my professional career, over 30 years evaluating government programs at the Government Accountability Office, the Government Watchdog, and in county government here in Washington State. For six years, I reviewed such county programs as EMS, public health, animal control, law enforcement and jail operations, among other programs. My profession, called performance auditing, determines if government programs are operating as expected and makes recommendations for improving government and measuring results. A little bit about me, I've been married to my wife Jill for 38 years, and we have three adult children, all of whom attended Western Washington University. I'm a real estate agent, and some of my community and volunteer experience includes the Boy Scouts, the United Methodist Church, and advocating for mental health issues here in Watcomb County. I want to bring my professional skills as a performance auditor to the Watcomb County Council. Some programs in Watcomb County are performing well, but other programs like our criminal justice system need reform. Also, we need to make progress on resolving our watershed resource challenges for farmers, fish, and residential development, and that process is currently stalled. We need builder incentives and public-private partnerships to find common sense solutions to lower our housing and childcare costs, and new approaches to assist those experiencing homelessness. I'm also committed to finding more options for those needing mental health and drug treatment, and diverting those who need that help from the Watcomb County Jail. These are complex problems. Solutions to them require experience, strong leadership, and innovative ideas. That's why I would like you to elect me your watchdog on the Watcomb County Council. Thank you.
Candidate Kirschner.
Good morning, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this event. I'm Kathy Kirschner. I live in Linden, and I'm running to be your voice from the heart of District Four on the Watcomb County Council. I believe our rural and small-town communities have not had a voice on the council for far too long. The values and lifestyles in small towns like Linden, Sumas, Everson, and Nuxack are often overlooked by our council. I am a retired commissioned naval officer. I served 22 years in the United States Navy. After graduating with a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Hawaii, I worked my way up to be part-owner of a multimillion-dollar social service agency supporting people with developmental disabilities in Washington State. I administered 19 contracts, supervised over 125 employees, and supported over 800 clients to live safe, independent, happy lives in their communities. I have run my own small business since 2003, evaluating programs that support people with disabilities in our communities. You elected me to serve on the county council in 2009. With my past service as county council member and former council chair, I know what the job entails and how the council works. We have many critical issues that need attention right now, and I'll be able to hit the ground running on day one to find solutions to these issues. I'll say no to policies that make it more difficult for our farmers to compete, or that increase housing costs for our local families. And I'll say no to outside interests that want to harm family wage jobs and prevent local businesses from thriving. I'm Kathy Kirschner. I ask for your vote, and in return, I promise I'll listen to you, and I'll fight to preserve our small-town character, our traditional values, and our rural lifestyles. It's about time you had a voice on the Watcomb County Council. For more information, you can visit my website.
Okay, thank you. So candidate Kirschner, I'm going to give you the first question. What legislation would you make a personal priority to get passed, and why?
I think that we need to be looking at our comprehensive plan and making sure that we are not passing legislation that will harm our Cherry Point Industries. So if we're talking about passing legislation, that's where I would focus my energies on in my first year in office.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Estes?
I have talked to the Watcomb County Prosecutor Sheriff Bill Elfo and Barry Buchanan about a number of steps that we need to resolve our jail and our criminal justice system. I would push for an ordinance that might result in a ballot measure, which I believe is the plan, to build a smaller jail in Bellingham, significantly increase funding for mental health and drug court, and provide additional resources to provide mental health and drug treatment. This will help with homeless, but also help the people in the jail that currently are not getting the help they need. So I would push for legislation around our criminal justice system.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Estes, you get this one first. How do you define a living wage job, and what are your ideas for increasing the number of living wage jobs in our county?
That's a good question, and clearly, the 40% of people, according to the United Way of Watcomb County, that live in or near poverty, and many of them are working full-time, are not receiving living wage jobs, and the wages have not kept pace with housing and childcare and other costs. I think the partnership between the port and the county economic development program needs to scale up and be more effective as it has been in creating high-wage jobs, but creating high-wage jobs is a partnership between a number of different organizations throughout our county, and we really need to put more resources and focus on that because incomes are just not keeping up with the expense of living in Watcomb County, and we need to do a better job on that.
Candidate Kirschner?
Can you repeat that question?
I'd be happy to. How do you define a living wage job, and what are your ideas for increasing the number of living wage jobs in our county?
Well, I define a living wage job as a job that will allow a family to pay for their housing costs, pay for their medical care, pay for their food, raise their children to go on to college, and continue that cycle again. I think that living wage jobs in Watcomb County are the backbone to our success as a county. They contribute to the quality of life that we experience here, and I am 100% in support of not only increasing living wage jobs, but maintaining the living wage jobs that we have here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, candidate Kirschner, you're first on this one. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report says that greenhouse gas emissions must be reduced 45% in the next 11 years to prevent catastrophic climate changes for those alive 20 years from now. What are your ideas for reducing county emissions?
Well, I think that one of the things that we can do is to continue to support our refineries, who are producing the cleanest energy in the world. If we shut them down and we get our fuel from India and China, we're going to be promoting more pollution in our atmosphere. I also think that all local governments can work harder to mitigate traffic in Watcomb County. The more cars that are sitting idle at stoplights, the more pollution that's going into the atmosphere. And the last thing that I would suggest is that since plants take carbon out of the atmosphere, that we all should be planting more trees and plants and gardens.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Estes?
Human-caused damage to the climate is definitely already and will continue to have impacts here in Watcomb County. As I understand it, we can both mitigate and adapt to the effects of damage to our climate. There are a number of things that the county can do in the way they run their buildings, facilities, their vehicle fleets could be outfitted to be all-electric, as well as working with residential, commercial, industrial, transportation, and the waste management sectors to conserve and use energy more efficiently. I am a little bit disappointed that the Citizen Advisory Task Force on Climate Change has not accomplished more to date. I understand they're going to be ramping up that effort, and I would look forward to getting their recommendations on other things we could do. I also think we need to link our land use and transportation planning, look at it in a more comprehensive way, with an impact towards mitigating or adapting to the effects of climate change.
Thank you. Candidate Estes? Water supply, water rights, and water quality will continue to be countywide concerns. What actions would you recommend county government take to ensure a safe, reliable, and adequate water supply for all uses in Watcomb County?
I've talked to a number of parties, farmers, others involved with this at the county level, and we need stronger leadership from the council and the executive to move forward and resolve the uncertainty affecting water related to farming and fish and residential development. Other parts of the state, Walla Walla, the Dunsheaness watershed near Port Angeles, and Yakima, have faced similar situations. Yes, the hydrology and climate in Eastern Washington are different, but the same parties as we have here in Watcomb County were involved with watershed issues there, and they have collaboratively reached a solution to address that issue, and we can do the same thing here. It's a little bit unclear to me ultimately who's really in charge of this. We have the Planning Unit and WIRA, but ultimately, it's a county decision, and we need to make this decision locally and not have Olympia impose a solution on us.
I would agree with Brian that it is disappointing that the Watcomb County Council has not taken a more active role in helping to solve this problem. My understanding is that currently, the Department of Ecology, which is a Washington State department, is helping us solve that problem. I also agree that it is unclear as to the people and organizations that have a role in solving this problem. We did have a planning unit, we do have a planning unit, and I know that the planning unit had worked for several years on this problem before it was taken out of their hands and given to the Department of Ecology. So as a council member, I would like to look at that and see what is our most effective way of coming up with solutions for our water issues in Watcomb County, work with the farmers who have got a good track record of conserving water, and bring all of those interested parties together.
Okay, we have a challenge. It's all in itself.
I'm actually not necessarily challenging Kathy's comments. I just think this issue is so important, we need to discuss it a little bit further. And one thing I wanted to make clear here is there's a number of state practices, specifically the use-it-or-lose-it provision, that if you do not use your water right within five years, it's taken away from you. This is a disincentive in many cases to overuse water, but if we had a system where you could trade water rights or water banking, that would go a long way towards resolving this situation, and I believe they've done that in those other water basins that I talked about. So we need a little bit of regulatory relief from Olympia to be able to do that, and so I just, that is something I would actively work on, on the council, to get that use-it-or-lose-it provision modified or changed so we can have water rights trading here in Watcomb County.
Okay. Candidate Kirschner, do you want to respond to the more on the water issue? As soon as our alarm goes off?
Not at this time, no.
No? Okay. That's okay, we're going to move on to the next question. Thank you. This one, I'm going to start with candidate Kirschner. So how would you approach the competing goals of protecting the agriculture land base in Watcomb County and providing non-agricultural or residential development in rural areas? If you could just please explain your policy and provide any specific, your position and any specific policies you would advance?
One of the things that needs to happen, and this is part of my platform to protect our small-town character, is we need to quit allowing Bellingham sprawl out into our small towns like Linden, Sumas, Everson, and Blaine. And so, working on the comprehensive plan, I would be very encouraging to the city of Bellingham to take their fair share of the housing that they should be taking, as opposed to what's happened over the last decade, when Bellingham only took 11% of the housing growth in the county, and the small towns have taken 20% to 25% of the growth. When small towns are expanding, they're expanding into agricultural resource lands. And so that is one policy and position I would take to prevent our egglands from being developed into rural housing.
Thank you. Candidate Estes?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. How would you approach the competing goals of protecting the agricultural land base in Watcomb County and providing non-agricultural or residential development in the rural areas? If you would explain your position, please, and then provide any specific policies you'd like to advance?
I think it is a good point to look at how we're allocating increasing housing usance across all the cities in District Four. I mean, that's something that the county can address in the comprehensive plan. My view is that we need more housing choices and options. Watcomb County needs more homes in all shapes and sizes for all of our neighbors. Just as our communities have all types of different people and incomes, we need different types of housing so they can afford to live near where they work. One of the things I think the comp plan could look at are what's called these lamarids or limited areas of more intensive rural development. I think it's possible to look at those and perhaps expand some of those, potentially, and thereby conserve our farmlands that are so vital to our economy here in Watcomb County.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Estes? The Cherry Point Industrial Zone was established 50 years ago to take advantage of its deep-water port. What are your goals for using this area?
Cherry Point has some of the highest wage jobs in Watcomb County, and we need to work to ensure that that facility can continue to operate under its existing conditions. I know the current land use restrictions do prohibit the export of crude oil, and I'd rather see that oil refined here. There's a lot more jobs with refining than there is with exporting. I know the comprehensive plan is going to take a look at balancing environmental protection, land use, public safety, and continued or expanded refinery operations. I'm encouraged by Phillips 66. They are planning to build a renewable diesel facility there, and I think that's the kind of production we'll see in the future. Global oil supply will be peaking within 10 years, and I think there will be changes at Cherry Point largely due to global changes in demand for oil, not so much of what we do here in Watcomb County.
Thank you.
Conversation needs to continue.
Thank you. Okay. Candidate Kirschner?
Cherry Point is Watcomb County's only industrial-use area, and we currently have two refineries and an aluminum refinery there. I am not going to say what I think should be at Cherry Point. Other than that, it should be, continue to be zoned for industrial-use areas, and we should be taking advantage of the deep-water port that we have in Watcomb County. It's one of very few on the West Coast, and it would allow us to, it allows us to bring our refineries to operate, but it could be expanded to allow us to ship Washington products all over the world. The Cherry Point Industrial Zone is home to 3,300-plus jobs. The average wage is $110,000. Cherry Point wages account for 9% of all wages paid in Watcomb County, and they pay over $370 million in taxes per year.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Kirschner? There are sovereign tribal nations in Watcomb County. What role, if any, do you think the county has in creating or fostering relationships with the tribes and their members?
Well, the tribes are their own governments, and the county is a government, and so there are government-to-government relationships that do occur and must occur, and I would be cognizant of that fact on the Watcomb County Council. In fact, in 2010, I worked with, I worked on the council with the tribes to negotiate a new ferry lease for the Lummi Island Ferry that we currently support, and I would continue to do that.
Candidate Estes?
I think we need to respect and acknowledge the treaties that exist really between the federal government and the Lummi tribe, but Watcomb County has important relationships with both the Nuxack and the Lummi Nation, especially on some issues related to law enforcement and public health. I mean, they have their own facilities for that, but a better collaboration can help us deal with some law enforcement and public health issues. I have some personal experience with this because my father was an enrolled member of the Chickasaw Nation in South Central Oklahoma, so I think we really need to work more collaboratively and in partnership with the Lummies and the Nuxacks on a variety of different issues.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Estes? The voters have twice rejected the bail, the jail bond, for construction of a new jail in Ferndale. What do you think the county should do about the current jail?
As I mentioned earlier, I've met with Watcomb County Prosecutor Eric Ritchie, Sheriff Elfo, and Councilmember Buchanan. And as some of you may have seen in the Herald not too long ago, Councilmember Buchanan described a framework that they're proposing to build a smaller jail in Bellingham, near the jail, I believe, and then increased funding for a mental health court, drug court, and other types of diversion programs. That's a positive first step, but I'm concerned that we are not doing some of this fast enough to truly help people that are in our jail that are not getting better there. So as that proposal emerges, we'll have to see, but it is going to require some funding increases to really provide the treatment that many of our people need that are currently in our jail.
I still support the same proposal that I supported in 2012, when the county purchased the land to build a jail out in Ferndale. That was a well-studied proposition, and that location was selected because it was one of the few in the county that would meet the criteria for the jail. We studied the numbers that we needed in the jail. We should not build a jail that's too small. We are currently housing people in Yakima jails because our jail is inadequate. We need to build a jail that will include mental health and substance abuse services so that we can reduce recidivism. We need to build a jail that will not break the bank in operations because it will be expensive to build a jail, expensive to operate a jail downtown. And we also needed to build a jail in a place that is allowed in the county code.
Thank you. Next question is going to go to candidate Kirschner. The residents of our county represent increasingly diverse ethnic, economic, racial, cultural, and religious communities. What are your plans to ensure the voices of all residents are heard on policy matters?
During my campaign, I've been reaching out to all different people in District Four, and I will continue to do that on the Watcomb County Council. I have always had an open-door policy to any individual or group that would like to come and talk to me about any issues that they have, and I don't see that changing when I'm elected to serve.
Thank you. Candidate Estes?
I think we do need to hear from an increasing number of members of our community. We are becoming more diverse. I think it might be time to look at the composition of our boards and advisory groups and make sure that the composition of those is representative of those in our community. And I do think on some issues, the county needs to have outreach or open forums, like on Saturdays, so more people can attend and do a better job of public information and public outreach so that everybody in Watcomb County is heard from.
Thank you. Okay, this is going to be our last question before your final statement. And we're going to start, excuse me, with candidate Estes. So the county's traditional method for sharing information and plans, like print media, no longer exists, or they don't reach all residents. Rumors and misinformation can easily spread on social media. What are your proposals for modernizing county outreach and community engagement?
Well, as I just mentioned, I think having more meetings in times that are more convenient for people to come. And I am very concerned that there's very little publicly accessible data, like on their website, about a number of different programs. I know the county is struggling with some legacy IT systems that need to be modernized, and I think they could do a much better job of using social media to communicate with a variety of audiences, not only in English, but perhaps in Spanish or Punjabi or other languages that are responsive to the people in our community. So I think we need to take a broader look and have more effective and varied communication styles to communicate with everybody in Watcomb County and make sure their voice is heard.
Thank you.
I don't actually have a plan, but I like what Brian just said about looking at our IT and making sure that our county website is up to date and easily navigable. I know I've had a little bit of trouble finding things as I've been researching parts of this job, so I would second that. As far as innuendo and rumor, I think that it's kind of a culture that we live in now with all of our social media, and it's up to the leadership to stand up and set the record straight and try to reach out to the most people with the correct information. So I would continue to do that.
Thank you. All right, we're right on schedule for closing statements. You'll each get one minute, and candidate Kirschner, you get to go first.
Okay. As a council member-- As a council member from the heart of District Four, I'll fight for level-headed policies that protect what's important to our local families, farmers, and businesses. I'm endorsed by the mayors of Linden, Sumas, Everson, Nuksek, Blaine, and Ferndale, because they know I will fight to preserve our small-town character, traditional values, and rural lifestyle. Laborers Union 292 endorsed me because they know I will never let outside special interests threaten their jobs. I'm endorsed by the Deputy Sheriff's Guild, Wacom Seven Firefighters, and former county prosecutor Dave McKeckren, because they know, I believe, ensuring the safety of our community should be the very first obligation of every elected leader. The Washington State Farm Bureau has endorsed me because they know I will stand up to be a real voice for farmers in District Four. I'm the only candidate with the experience to hit the ground running on day one. I am Kathy Kirchner, and I would appreciate your vote on August 6th. For more information, please see my website at votekirchner.com.
Candidate Estes?
I'd like to thank the League again for sponsoring this debate. I would just also say that I have over six years' experience with a wide variety of issues related to county government, and I too would be ready to go on day one. I have the skills to make a difference on the Wacom County Council, to hold government accountable, produce effective results, and resolve some longstanding issues. My priorities would be to reduce uncertainty about the Nuksek watershed issues, support our dairy and dairy farmers with needed trade reforms and other actions, planning for a new, smaller jail in Bellingham, including more funding for mental health and drug treatment, and creating more high-wage jobs so that people can afford to live near where they work. I'm endorsed by the Wacom Democrats, the 42nd Legislative District Democrats, Washington Conservation Voters, the Washington Teamsters Legislative League, and the Riveters Collective. Please visit my website, votebrianestes.com, for more information, and please elect me, Brian Estes, on August 6th for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're a small audience, but a reminder that we are going to be broadcast, and you can see this again on YouTube. But thank you, and to our candidates, thank you for running, and thank you for being here today. We appreciate everyone's time. Thanks.